Please rise and salute the flag.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Martino, can I have a vocal? Can you tell us, Wolf, please?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Byes?
Here.
Mr. Doughty? Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Martino here. Mr. Ocas O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Radowski?
Here.
And Mr. Wolf?
Here. Okay, the procedures for public participation are pinned inside the cover of your agenda. At the appropriate time, for public comment, please approach the podium, sign in, state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have two minutes to address the board. Also, I want to make sure I keep announcing that all the attachments that the board had that are available to the public are available on our website, and it's a hard copy in the back room for view in that folder. So if you want to see what the attachments are that we're talking about, give them up as soon as you can. Announcements, we do have an agenda edit tonight under number nine, Finance. Letter I, add letter I, approve the recommendation by the Finance Committee that the high school athletic department's second account be closed effective immediately. The second is to replace under 12 programs, letter D, approve the 2016-17 school calendar. The attachment has been revised. Are there any other edits?
Mr. Wolf, I have one from the Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting. At our last meeting, we voted to approve an Aggressive Kindergarten Pilot Program, two sections, beginning next school year. We're going to include that, as I said, in the meeting.
What is the motion?
What is going to be the motion?
The motion is going to be to approve the Aggressive Kindergarten Pilot Program for two sections. I have my discussion. I'm glad you're able to create this agreement.
Are there any other edits?
Mr. Wolf, it's not actually an edit. It should have been under announcements. This was my fault, but January was for the new members, especially with School Board Appreciation Month, and I forgot to advise both the new board president and the new superintendent.
So we missed our appreciation?
We're underappreciated, yes.
Okay, also, there's an announcement that will be an executive session following the committee to hold meeting for the purpose of discussion negotiations. Is there any public comment on items listed on the agenda? Seeing none, Superintendent's report?
Okay. Okay.
Can you hear me?
We had posted, well, we have posted on our Daniel Boone Wett's website, the vocational technical advisor. We have Ms. Weber here, who would like that position. So Ms. Weber, can you please come up? Didn't know I was going to do this, did you?
No, I didn't.
Okay, hit the button. Okay, Ms. Weber is interested in holding that position as the liaison between the cross and then the BCTC. So Ms. Weber, can you tell us about yourself, please?
My daughter's a freshman in the high school. She'll be going to the BCTC next year. I have background in accounting and finance. I've been working in the industry for a little over 20 years, currently a pricing analyst at Times and Chuck's. Those are just high-level qualifications that I think may be a candidate for the position.
Any questions for her?
Well, thank you for volunteering. Now, we need to vote to put that on the special voting meeting.
Okay.
That was one thing I forgot to mention as far as the agenda. There will be a voting meeting, special voting meeting, following the committee to hold. We'll add that motion.
Okay, also, this Thursday, school conferences are occurring, so we'll be dismissing early. And a snowstorm is on the way, so I will be up all night doing my anti-sno dance while some do their snow dance.
Do we have our trucks here?
Yes.
We're ready if it snows. So we'll wait and see what happens. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there any public comment in the Superintendent's report? Seeing none, Curriculum Instruction.
Thanks, Mr. Wolf. The Curriculum Instruction Committee met in January, discussed a variety of topics. Chief among those was the Aggressive Kindergarten Pilot Program. And all the other members can speak to this if they had anything to add beyond what I said here. We've been discussing this for a long time now, and the recommendation of administration and seconded, moved on and entered by the committee was to institute a pilot program wherein the results and the data would be tracked for, I believe, five years, Mr. Wolf? At the end of third grade, or actually four years, four years in third grade. For a total of four years to institute this pilot program, to look at and examine how it works. But the proposal is to institute Aggressive Kindergarten, full-day Aggressive Kindergarten for two sections. Now, there was discussion as to whether or not we have one section in Manhattan County Elementary Center and one in Amity, or both in Manhattan County Elementary Center. The committee has determined that don't want to be paying busing, don't want to build buildings, but that was never firmly established. They did have the administration to figure out which they wanted to do, but the recommendation to the committee is that we have two sections, that we do not bus students between schools, and that we institute this program beginning next school year. There will be opportunity for me to talk about the rest of the meeting, which I do have right now, as long as I'm sure it's still in the voting meeting. I think we changed it recently, but I'll talk about what else we discussed. We had a brief discussion about kindergarten registration and the deadlines. We talked about perhaps adding a new resident information package. We moved again what's likely to know, what would families know. We're working on, I think we're continuing to work on instituting a fully recognition program, and we've been told by Mr. Wolf that we'll have the proposal to enter at the next meeting.
Yep.
All right, very good. And then we're continuing to discuss study halls, class size, staffing at the high school level, but the big, the banner I had in our last meeting was moving forward to the Aggressive Kindergarten Pilot Program. So that is on the agenda to improve at the voting meeting. It doesn't need to be determined though which building it's good session for.
Now, approximately how many students are two sections of that? Roughly 40?
If you want to cap it, I have 15.
15?
Yeah, 15.
So 30 total?
Yeah.
30 total?
Yes.
Just for my information, I wasn't at the Curriculum Instruction meeting when we discussed how, what criteria needs to identify the children that are at risk.
If you take a look at the binder itself, inside of the binder, our student identification is to that. We'll be using the ETS assessments, and you can kind of see what this year's totals were. If basically the student score is below 60 on this assessment, then they're considered at risk. We'll be looking for the most needed students. We'll have to have a cutoff date, obviously, in which, in May, when we do actually do the tests themselves, if they haven't registered by then, we're just not going to be able to work right then from a risk basis.
Well, it's important information to figure out to the public and to make sure that the records are in on time, so that they feel that they have a child that's at risk to get that.
Yeah, we were actually, first of all, getting at that in terms of using social media and some other things to ensure that all the info gets out.
Very good. Thank you. I think it was, it's been a long time coming. I know you've been working very hard on it, and I appreciate the work of the administration, the teachers that have been working out on this, and I think it has a lot of value to these students and need those.
Glad we can move forward.
Could you push the batteries in?
Once we do the assessment, we have any idea what the number of kids is going to be, and what if it's well above the number in two sections? I believe that the determination, these numbers were determined looking at historical averages by the House of Labor Administration. I mean, we're capping it in two sections. That was what the committee recommended. So if it is well and above beyond that, then, my foot is important. I'll just speak loudly. If it is above and beyond that, then I'd expect the administration to come back and tell us, and we can evaluate and change course for next year. But keep in mind, it is a pilot program, and we're determining whether we want to transition it, if it works in these years, if we can expand it, if it doesn't work, we can do away with it. But the idea is to start somewhere.
Mr. Scott, what was discussed at the meeting was that as a pilot program, it would be the first 15 that qualified under the criteria. So if there's more beyond that, we'd still have a cap at the first 15.
Is there any public comment?
First of all, I want to compliment the board on making a step to help our youngest of most needy kids. Like you said, a long time coming. It's something that we definitely need. I'm getting some feedback from teachers that when piloting a new program, it's often very helpful for those two teachers to work closely together so that they can collaborate particularly during their planning time. So having them together in the same building might be more beneficial than having those at-risk classes in two separate buildings. Something to make of that while it's still in planning stages.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, Buildings and Grounds?
Thank you. Facilities met on January 25th. We talked about a embedded rebate program for NG and cases going to put together for the next facilities, meaning a cost of what we would spend in repayment to upgrade some of the way to take advantage of the rebate, which is currently 11 cents, like the one hour, up from the normal five. I believe that's only through the end of February, though, so three of the facilities can be required to the voting meeting, and then we might make a recommendation, so it could rather be. So that is only through, I think, the end of the month unless they extend that. We also talked about some of the root warranties, and the high school is expiring in 2017. We're looking into cases, maybe some middle schools, see if we have warranties there to students that they work. We talked some about the staffing needs and also the contracted services and those potential R and Bs, and then also whether or not cases going to, the Department of Grassroots, the Department of Police, some assistance somewhere, because we were down a few people. We talked about the high school sign and the fact that that's working intermittently, and received an email this weekend, I think that was, they were sending the module under warranty, so I think Casey should keep a plug in the manufacturer that to get that taken care of. Talked about some parking lots and practice facilities taking place, and then we briefly discussed the building presentation by Jim Thompson, and that was going to be discussed at a public town hall meeting in February, and took without this direction on where to start focusing our capital investments in the building. So there wasn't, again, it wasn't a whole lot of directions. We're still waiting on those decisions, but the next facilities meeting will be prior to the voting meeting in two weeks, and I do ask, just for the future of that, because I will be out there, so that's all I have.
Any board questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, Finance. We have, under Finance, we have items eight through, again, eight through I. Is there any board discussion? Anything to add, Mr. Martino?
I can give you the Finance Committee report. Finance Committee was, meeting was held on February 4th. It began with a comprehensive presentation by Nutrition's Group. They discussed the revenue and their plans to market their products, as well as plans to satisfy the students' preferences. They actually had a chart showing which schools are meeting their expectations, which ones they feel they need to do more work at, and there was some positive feedback from a former cafeteria employee who now works for Nutrition's Group. It was at this meeting that we discussed consolidating the district checking accounts and eliminating the one at the high school. There was a budget update on the 2016-17 preliminary budget, but there's no change because the business office has received no additional data from the state. And we're proposing a public presentation at the March Committee at the Hall Meeting, and that would be held in the middle school auditorium because of the seating and the screen for the projector. I also presented some ideas to reduce costs to close the budget deficit. I asked the committee, and now I'm asking the rest of the board and the administration and even the public, to also come up with ideas to reduce costs. Some of the ideas I mentioned to reduce cost and/or increase revenue were to adjust staffing to enrollment, the maintenance outsourcing that's already begun. There's more than likely additional Pennsylvania revenue for 2015-16. Governor Wolf only released a percentage of the revenue, so the rest is yet to come, and we're not sure how much that is, nor do we know what revenue we'll receive in 2016-17 and even 2017-18, and our five-year budget projection goes, shows the deficit through 2017-18. So we need to see what we're getting from the state at some point. We also talked about reviewing all contracts, including the solicitor and the transportation contract. Mr. Ocas O'Neil was just telling me that there's a Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, and I know Mr. Small and I have discussed that contract, and we believe that, well, we need to enforce the current contract and then even look at soliciting bids for other contractors to bid upon. We'll be refinancing bonds in 2017, assuming rates stay reasonably low. We also talked about moving fifth grade to the middle school in 2016, and then review and revise all facility usage. We want to review all leases, including River Rock and the Transition House. We want to, we talked about the business office researching contracting out collection of unpaid school property taxes. There are companies out there that will buy our unpaid bills from us at a percentage on a dollar, and they collect the taxes. And that's most of what we discussed. I do have a question. Mr. Small, is that easy-pass money we discussed, has that been collected?
Do you have an answer to this one?
Mr. McKnight? Has that easy-pass money been collected yet?
I can answer that. The person responsible is away, so when they return, the money will be collected.
Thank you. And lastly, the next Finance Committee meeting will be held at 6:00 PM on March 3rd. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. I just wanted to say that I did reach out to the president of Sports Boosters, because they had some folks that wrote, that were responsible for writing the grant that got us $33,000. I felt that, you know, that was such a substantial donation to the school that it would be best served if we brought them in and formally recognized them. And Ms. Heffner did say that Mrs. Reno, and I think there was two other individuals that were more closely responsible for working on that grant, and that they would be the persons to attend, but I thought that was a better way to show our appreciation rather than just a mention of our agenda and an ovation.
I have a few things on fire. You'll find, one, I wanted to correct the report we ran in the US Senate votes regarding the preliminary budget to pass. The state of the pass, I believe, said one, Mrs. Byes was the only person to vote against it, when in fact, I believe, the vote was five-three, and votes against it were myself, Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Martino, so I hope the correction is forthcoming there. And additionally, I wanted to talk about the state budget very quickly, or the lack there of. It's beginning to impact our district in the sense that we're trying to plan the next budget year, and we're still waiting on the numbers this year, and that makes it very difficult to determine tax rate, how much we're going to be able to keep different budget areas across the district. And Mr. Martino made the comment that the rest is yet to come. Let's hope that the best is yet to come as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Is there any public comment?
A couple, then, Mr. Wolf, please. First, I didn't have anybody on the board had any questions. Got the IU budget, at number nine, see. See, our cost went up $696, I believe, to $37,377. Obviously, I didn't, the money comes from the state and other sources that they, that they outsource their services to, so obviously that was very small to us, but anybody have any questions on that? Additionally, I did want to touch on the, I think it's the People Admin one? Actually, I wanted to touch with on the People Admin and the National School Applications Network. So my one question with the People Admin was their automatic 5% increase annually for renewal and strong ban, A, automatic renewal, and B, an automatic 5% increase every year. Seems to be a pretty stiff increase for the services every year. So I was just sure if we were going to look at that. And then on the National School Applications Network, so how is, I was looking at their, if you look at their maps and choose an area that you're going to select, that I guess they're going to try and, folks, when they go to look for jobs, that they'll look at your area. So I was curious, if you're searching for jobs, does that take into account the other area as well? Because obviously, our area, we're right, the Berks, Montgomery County line is the cut, but obviously, if you're living in Montgomery County, you would obviously quit up for them. But if you're looking for jobs, does that exclude, or let's say it's our job, will we post it only in that area, or will it, if we post a job, will that leave the entire state? Does anybody have any of that?
It would depend on your search criteria. It would depend on how you search. So you can search by region or overall.
Would we post, if we post a job, could we post it for some regions, so that when I search, it would come up? Or we have to post it for the region that we originally picked?
Well, you can search, if it's a filtering system. So you can search, we post a job, but then depending on, well, where we're located.
Right, so it would be a question for two reasons? Or?
We post it. Yes, you can post it for all regions. That's a good idea. This service is going, one of the most important things to do is obviously hiring teachers. This service is going to give us access to a lot more applicants, and it is very popular throughout the state. Most new teachers are looking at sites either PA Educator or PAB, the two major ones. This one is used mostly in this area. PA Educator is a similar service than PAB, but you're going to see that it's mostly used out west in Pennsylvania, so this is one of the ones.
I just wanted to make sure we're not going to get cut off in the, I don't know, kind of line.
That's a good question.
And then I guess, the other thing was that the other contract with that 5% increase and the automatic renewals, since I know we don't want any contracts out behind the building, so. Just for Small, is there an escape clause attached? Would be applying somebody else's?
I'll find out.
You have it, Ms. Kramer?
An escape clause on PAB.
Yeah. Mr. Small's kind of looking at that. Is there any other board discussion questions?
I had a little question on that People Admin contract also. I didn't see where it would be adjudicated if it ended up in dispute. Did I miss it?
I just can't.
I didn't see in the contract later, just read it too fast, where the, where it would be adjudicated if there was a dispute resolving from it? Did I just miss that? Like, I don't know where these people are based.
Are you referring to PAB?
People Admin.
Contract? That would be Mr. Wolf's.
Is state of Texas there?
Yeah, according to the law of the state of Texas.
According to the laws of state of Texas.
Okay.
Is there any other board comment? Okay, seeing none, the public comment, Finance? Seeing none. Presentations by board members. Mr. Martino, is there any secretary's correspondence?
No, none.
BCIU board report, Mr. Rathke?
Well, I just saw the, of course, the budget came out, and we will need to, I believe, we seem to need to vote in twice actually, so that will be coming up. And obviously, as we all know here, the, you know, obviously with the partial passing of the budget, BCIU has received some money, so we able to do our current bills, and we actually did not have the resorts happening in that second line of credit that we have, but obviously, we'll maintain that because going forward, we know where things will reside, so at least for right now.
How far can they go with the money they didn't see?
We still, we're still trying to see what's coming in. There's so many different budgets with the IU, we didn't necessarily get everything in one shot, so probably have better gaps than that at the upcoming meeting, some of these.
I just noticed looking at the budget here, there's been some massive turnover in BCIU board.
I think some people did step down, you know, tired.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Refgad? BCTC board report, Mr. Lassie?
Thank you. The BCTC board met on the last Sunday, Wednesday in January, and we talked a little bit about the preliminary budget for '16, '17, and in the track of that, the Finance Committee had recommended a direct budget to the Joint Operating Committee and had been presented at the PAVE meeting. Another business, they authorized disposal of lawsuits and authorized contracts for five years for the regional area-wide network and the land connection between the campuses. And that was, I did talk to Dr. Kraft about Arlington Board Meeting there and their suggestion, one of his, that we invited everyone out to the BCIU meeting. It's going to be the activity of the annual BCIU meeting.
IU's always the third or fifth.
They can mention, no. That's being held at the BCTC this year, so they recommended maybe trying to, I don't know what the date, but inviting everyone to come out because they do have hors d'oeuvres and food before the meeting. And then they said, at this point, if we wanted to hold a meeting at the school, it would be better for the fall because we're kind of both commensurate and planned out at the end of the year. So, but they, we wanted to, well, this year, I think that would be a good opportunity at the annual BCIU convention, so.
Okay. So we've discussed that and agreed that's what we're going to do or hold off and wait for the fall, take a day in the fall? Just good luck.
I know that's May, I don't, I think it might be the first of May, actually. Is it, is it that? Oh, you don't know, okay. But we'll get, I'll get that later.
Get a date with this.
Sure.
Legislative report, Mr. Martino? What's going on in Harrisburg is actually ludicrous at this point. I mean, if it didn't impact school districts across the state, it would be laughable, but it's not. We are now 222 days without a 2015-16 Pennsylvania budget. More than that, tomorrow, Governor Wolf is going to present his 2016-17 budget proposal. And that was actually rescheduled. It was supposed to take place last Tuesday, but there was a conflict with Groundhog Day. And the significance of Groundhog Day is that this budget is more of the same as last year's budget. He's proposing another $200 million increase in school funding with a more than commensurate increase in taxes, and we still don't have last year or the current year's budget yet, so I don't know where this is going. There seems to be no end in sight. You actually have three entities, the governor, the state senate, and the state house, all with different ideas. It should be noted that contrary to political statements, there has not been a statewide cut in funding. There's a claim that the funding dropped under Governor Corbett. Actually, the only reduction in school funding was because the stimulus package was one-time money and was never intended to be a recurring payment. And the $95 million now being cited by Governor Wolf that the legislature is cutting is only $95 million less than he was asking for. So there's a lot of rhetoric being kicked around, but nobody knows where it's going. Also, there were Plan Con funds, which are monies that are owed to us for construction, that we thought were being released. We thought there was an agreement in place, and because of everything else being in limbo, the Plan Con funds are still on limbo also. I do want to commend this board and the administration, especially Mr. Small, for weathering the budget crisis without needing to borrow money or reduce programs like many other districts. There are many districts that have gone deeper in debt, and now there are lawsuits where they're trying to sue the Commonwealth to recoup their interest costs. In fact, I read today that, I forget how much Philadelphia borrowed, but it's another $4 million in interest just for Philadelphia. So this budget conflict, like I started, is just ludicrous. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Martino. Is there any questions for Cal? Okay. Student board representative report?
The first thing I'd like to say is something that happened out, it's early found out upstate. Michaela Flanagan at the high school, she had an honorable mention for her artwork called "Three Cups," and it's actually going to be presented on the billboard on 422 East. So if you're driving by that line, look for a billboard of "Three Cups." That's actually one of the high school students, senior.
That's her name again?
Michaela Flanagan. Yeah. And she's, I think she's pursuing a career in art, but she's fabulous stuff. Figure out that. Other stuff, we had a sports signing ceremony. We have four students so far that are signed from colleges to play sports in college. We have our cheer competition, which I personally don't even know the results yet. Did you?
From the last?
The last three weeks, the girls cheer, competitive cheer team was third in districts, 11th in states, and they're down in national, down in Florida in the national competition, and they're in the final, made the final cut to the top place round for the cheer competition of the nationals.
Hopefully, we'll have those results soon. TSA, we had Rachel on Saturday, and a lot of the kids from the high school and the middle school have placed or are pursuing on to states. District 10 band and chorus just had their activity festivities, if either of you guys have heard of that. Valentine's Day at the high school, we have a lot of fundraisers that are currently going on to help raise money for the different classes and clubs. More was a couple days ago, and that raised a lot of money for the school and everything as well. Mr. Harris has continued coming down and meeting with random kids to kind of get insight as to what the basic things are, the biggest compliments, what we can achieve as a district. Midterms have started happening because we've just entered the second semester, so that's always exciting, which means that scheduling has begun. Mr. McKnight has now put the underclassmen explaining pathways program to them, so as they start working out their schedules and get teacher recommendations, they can figure out a pathway for them. The Keystone graduation requirement, kind of you guys did the mulling that, have been postponed for 2017 and 2018. We're still figuring out what they're going to do there. The Winter Concession Stand has finished up. Wrestling and basketball just have their senior night. Ice hockey is coming up, and bowling senior night is actually tonight, so I'm sure they're having a blast. Mr. Boone, the top 14 will be announced Friday, so if you guys are going to go see Mr. Boone, you can find out Friday, you know, who will be there. SUSE is happening March 4th and 6th, and we're all invited to come out and support that. Spaghetto Sonata for the Music Boosters is March 5th, so you can come out and hear of that. Key Club, PIA District Convention is March 11th and 13th. Odyssey of the Mind Reheals is March 12th. Parent Teacher Conference is opening up, and the musical practice is actually tonight. That's where Kenzie is. She was very upset that she couldn't be both places, but had enough stress. And we have a student government meeting tomorrow. Very curious if there's anything specific you guys would like brought up at that meeting.
Thanks, Rose.
Is there any questions from the suite?
Comment?
Thank you. That was a great report. I really appreciate that, and I think that the student board representative initiative that we started is working on plates well. That was a great comprehensive review. And I did want to comment on the art display that we had at the Yogan Institute recently and how thoroughly impressed I am with the talent in this district and a shout out to all the art teachers for supporting Mr. Jacobson, particularly, for the presentation. And a lot of our students won first place. I think it was a different award, right? Then Michaela's, I think it was a different name, but we placed so well, and it was our first few of years there, Mr. McHattner. Can you tell us a little more about it, or did I cover that?
You're absolutely done. We've had a lot of awards from art and music this year so far. We kind of recap those at the past meetings. The one, probably one to bring out is Michaela's going to be part of the Lamarr Interactive Board, and that will be on 4/22, kind of reveal on Lancaster Avenue and the Queen City Restaurant Tower, kind of going in there, so that's, if you're looking, I don't want you guys looking down this way, they'll be home.
Thank you to everyone who puts their heart and soul into that program, and that's really good for, against a manifest of artistic talent.
Any other board questions or comments? Mr. Lucas and Neil, the transportation report?
We've not had a report at this time, other than to say that there is a Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at 6 o'clock here, for anyone who is interested in attending. That's, of course, assuming that the weather cooperates. For the record, basically on the agenda is just to go over the contract with the board members who will be in attendance and whatever public persons might show up, because it's been so long, I think, since the Transportation Committee has met. So we're going to go over the contract, we're going to talk about the RFP process and the timeline for the RFP process, and then Mr. Small and I have had some preliminary conversations, and we're hoping to have things. The contract does not expire until June of 2017, but we would like to get the bids and all that in order now so that we know what our costs will be going forward, you know, well in advance of the contract expiring, so.
Will it be a representative from New Roads or Klein to answer any questions, or is this just?
Not at this point. I think at this point, the issue is just trying to make sure that we get the board up to speed, and then if there's more in-depth conversations that are required, we need representatives to go that route.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for, sir, this Neil? I just have a comment or a couple comments. And Mr. Small, I know is aware of this, the, there's a computer program that outlines, and the board needs to know this, that helps you formulate how the bus routes are developed. And up until now, that computer program has been, even though it's ours, has been in the sole possession of New Roads. Mr. Small's in the process of getting access to that program so he could look at how possibly the routes could be tightened up and not crisscross and perhaps reduce the number of buses and the time involved. So that's one aspect, and then the midday bus runs are another aspect that need to be looked at because we've been being charged for them, and according to the contract, we probably shouldn't be, so that needs to be determined also. But that's the two big areas, is tightening up the runs and looking at the midday cost.
Just to leave you on, Ms. Martino, Lauren and I have discussed both those issues, and I have also asked whether I can get a copy of the software package, because I would like to get familiar with it and see if I can, you know, once again, help assess whether or not the routes are being optimized at this point or not.
Thank you. Is there any other board reports? Is there any public comment? Seen them.
Question, the, so, is it our responsibility to determine the routes?
Well, I think, you know, ultimately, the board has oversight.
I meant the district. Is it the district's responsibility to determine the routes?
It's our responsibility to approve the routes.
Approve the routes?
Okay.
I could be wrong, I'm not going from, I was on the board either, Mike, Mike, or everybody, I believe, I heard was that we used to have a certification worker or employee here who would do all this for us that acquisition was cut, and then they.
Well, barred down the. He was transferred to the, to Road.
Okay.
Same person.
But no longer on payroll, right?
Well, we pay a portion of that.
Yeah.
We pay a portion of that salary, yes.
And then that software kind of, that was kind of farmed out to them as well as opposed to doing under our.
Right.
And it sounds like there's a lot of interest in understanding how it works and, you know, looking at it to see if there's anything that could be optimized.
Yeah.
Getting access, first step.
Yeah, I was thinking, like, if the transportation company determines how that, it seemed to be a real good decision to that to be, and I would think it'd be pretty tough for us to validate it unless we had our own packaging for it.
And that, I mean, that's exactly why we want access to the software, is like you said, essentially at this point, the Fox is running the handouts, right? Or, and we don't know if it's being abused or not, but certainly there's potential for abuse, so that's why we're in the process of trying to get the software licenses so that we can oversee whether or not they're doing a good job of optimizing them or not. But yeah, in August every year, at this point, that gentleman at New Roads does deliver the routes and they do get approved by the board.
So let's say we approve the, you know, we check it, we approve the routes, does that mean that the lease of price for that is based on those routes and it sticks, meaning if they're not adhering to those routes, they can't come out and say, hey, it's actually costing us more than we thought?
What happens, Mr. Sky? The routes very well could change during the year as people move in or move out.
Yeah.
But the contract basically says they're paid so much per day per bus, so as long as the number of buses doesn't change, the contract pretty much stays the same.
It gets really complicated unless something's changed. I know there's a formula depending on the age of the bus.
We talked about that.
And there's certain reimbursements depending on the new bus versus a X number of year-old bus and how many miles.
So if a route changes 20 times in a year, there's no additional cost?
No, it's on.
As long as under that number of miles.
They spend all the route.
As long as under the number of miles.
And there's no change to the cost to the company for use of the bus, but the amount of reimbursement dollars that we receive can change if the routes change.
So there's two moving parts here. There's how are the routes moving, and then how does the change in the routes affect how much of the time is laid and then the mileage and all the variables that are, that go into this reimbursement formula is also a factor, so it gets pretty complicated.
Because if we're, if we're only utilizing buses, mileage, as has been known to the public stated, we may want to, there's a cost to transport two students back and forth. If we have to consolidate the average kindergarten in one building, you know, there's an opportunity there that we could have additional transportation without additional cost, so that's how we're going to have it.
Sorry to turn this into a.
Great question. Absolutely great question. You won't know unless you.
And just a question for the public. I believe the contract is online if anybody wanted to read it, or under the business office documents?
Correct.
Which is public documents under the administration.
District.
District.
Is there any other? Oh, really, it was. Is there any other board comment? Any public comment? Moving on to personnel. I'm in 11B. I know that's been a concern for a while to get some stability into that position. I'm glad that we were able to work out the details to retain Mr. Schmidt, so, thank you.
It's a long time coming.
I guess it's better not to ask how.
Legally.
Yes, legally is always the best option.
Legal.
Okay. Is there any, any questions on personnel?
I have a couple.
Despite.
May I?
Sure.
To the, that's again, that's a reading, teacher mentor, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, speech.
Speech. Speech. And for, A, the transfer, basically. And for A, the transfer, basically that was for more hours, it looks like. Anything else stayed the same? We're talking about the high school transfer, or secretary receptionist, level two. Level two, still 200 days a year. So it's just that we've taken it off from 3.5 hours per day, if that makes sense, huh?
Yes.
There's a reason, Mr. Asser, Mr....
Well, yes, after the last resignation. I know you've asked before why things can't happen simultaneously, but sometimes things take a little time of doing. So this person was already in place, and instead of hiring another person, this person will fulfill more of the duties by bumping up a couple of hours.
Great, thank you. The professional, 5A1 Heather Brown, teacher sub. Is that a district-wide sub that we still employ just to come on site every day? You doing that still? What is a teacher sub for K6? Could you explain to me what the... That's just an approved substitute that we call it?
Correct.
Yes.
And the aide, the classified B1 aide, is that tied to a building and sub which one? Tiny Fisher? She didn't just float around?
Well, they don't float around, they're on call.
They're on call? So do they just come in, would she just be example of an aide that just comes in when she's needed?
Correct. They're all substitutes.
Thank you, they're substitutes. And George Schmidt, Athletic Director, salary is not, was that by design or is that a...
Should be, it's $60,000.
It's in the contract.
It should be attached contract.
The public didn't get to see the contract.
Yes, they did.
It's online.
It's posted.
Okay. That's it.
I have a question too, a few questions here. I'm looking at item 112A, whose books are the books. Is that speech teacher? Is that speech therapist, or...?
Yes.
Okay. And now I'm wondering, is, well, one, why is it listed as speech teacher, but that's not everything?
It's a classification, we have the same thing, it's a classification.
Okay. Now, within that teacher contract, I know that teachers, they're given the opportunity to have teacher mentors. Now, within that teacher contract, there are other professionals as well, for example, the speech therapists. I believe the school psychologists are included in the teacher contract, is that true?
That is true.
Information about church medicine is a compromise there. But do we employ teacher mentors in the school psychologists? Or are we doing that?
Yes.
Okay. No, my question, thank you.
No, you got me.
No, you got me. I've been wondering, what, when they mentor, and how does it depend upon teacher mentors?
The actual building, I'll let Shelley talk to it, but it's the...
If a classroom teacher would be a mentor, you have to be up here at the same job task.
Okay.
So a school psychologist would have to...
Would have to mentor a school psychologist.
So is Ms. Gaynor a speech therapist?
She is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comment, questions? Any public comment? Seeing none. Programs? Anybody have any questions on the items listed in the program?
I only have a question about the at-risk kindergarten. Before we vote on this, two weeks from now, I... Is, is all the data going to be finalized as far as where the, where the classes are going to be held? And, and the cost and transportation, if any? I mean, we're going to need all that before we can vote on it.
Everything's right here in the binder, here for you now. In terms of students, until they're tested in May, we're not going to know exactly where it's going to fall out. We can look at historical data as predictors, but it can't be 100% certain. I believe the committee's direction that I got, if I misheard, I apologize. They wanted, want us to run it without any transportation costs, and so we're going to do it without any transportation costs. And we'll put the classes wherever we can do it, the rest can serve most students without any transportation costs involved.
And I spoke to the two teachers who made the presentation, and they obviously would like to be in the same building, but they said this is long overdue, and as a pilot program, they'll take it any way they can get it.
So just to clarify, when it comes time to approve this, here in the month, administration is saying, we recommend it's either it's ongoing to be an NEC, or we recommend it's going to be split between AIC, or excuse me, AEC and NEC?
We have a recommendation in that regard.
Thank you.
So we're going to pilot, who are we looking to find out from pilot? Just a general gauge of success, and then potentially rolling out, or...
Well, the, Mr. Hurley, you've got a great presentation showing the different metrics that we're going to be looking at and measuring over the course. The goal is to have these students compare where they, where their, their other, where comparable cohorts are in third grade versus where these students have benefited from at risk kindergarten, and how they compare with previous generations of students who've gone ahead at risk kindergarten, to see if they're, I don't know, like, the RANAS test is one example, the DIBL score, just to compare those numbers. With that risk versus without that risk, is there any major difference?
Student's getting results from this really to...
We might be able to see just maybe, I mean, we're not going to be able to determine whether the program was a success or a failure, dependent on the four years, but we're going to be able to, I imagine, see gradual changes around the course. I think that's my understanding, is what all of this referrals means to it.
Yeah, in the binder itself, guys, you can see a timeline, there are various metrics that we're going to be using, key performance indicators. So we'll be assessing the students' math, and reading, social skills development in the short term. So you're going to see benchmarks as we go through the year, next year. That data will be coming to the ultimate. In the longer term, we'll be looking at whether the results are sustainable. Do these results, are these students at risk at the end of third grade? Also, one of the benefits we hope to get out of this is less students will be in need of special education services down through, as a result of us being in need early. I think there's a pretty substantial amount of research behind this. Within your binder, I included three articles, like, 850, if you want, all under a different topic. Just they've got, we think it will work, and we think we'll get the results with it. And we'll be happy to share the results with the board.
Mr. Scott, there's even more than that. And Mr. Hurley will tell you, I was one of the advocates of this from the beginning, but there is an additional cost. And if we call it a pilot program, and at the end of the four years, look to see if the results equal the cost. I mean, are there results for what we're spending? If it's not a pilot program, you're putting the board in the position four years from now of saying, "Oh, my God, they had at risk and they did away with it." So in the interest of full disclosure, if it's a pilot program, and the results are not sustainable, as Mr. Hurley said, and they're not showing that it's worth having, then the pilot program ends. If it's worth having, then it'll be up to the board at that time to determine whether to continue it or not.
I guess my, I guess my guess is, are we sticking to four years? Or what if we feel confident, is there any way we might feel confident in two years?
No, because, because the kindergarten class that's entering will be tested again at the end of third grade. Am I correct there?
The third results will be collected at the end of third grade also, just to see if those students are maintaining what we've seen in the key performance indicators that are in the binder.
The, the original proposal was three years, but then at the curriculum meeting, when he said the testing would actually be done in third grade, that automatically makes it four years.
I have a question, and I apologize if this is in the binder, and I just didn't, it's really... Are you judging me, to use this as a term, return on investment? Are you, are you looking at that as, I mean, how are you judging? Is that purely a financial number, are we saving X amount in special, in, in special ed and secondary fourth grade? As opposed to the, I mean, are the sack criteria in there, how are you judging it? Because I think common sense says it's going to be beneficial to the kids that are in it, period, and majority. So what's that rationale that you're looking for?
No, it's, it's not based on money, it's based on the results of these tests. If, if the tests show that it was beneficial academically, then it's worth the cost.
I wasn't sure, because you said, is it worth the cost? I, I don't, you know, I didn't know what you meant by worth the cost.
No, worth the cost simply is, and I can't get this on, so now it's on.
There was a number on, I turned it off.
Worth the cost is only simply if, if, at the end of four years, if we do the testing and it shows no improvement, then it's not working.
Right, okay, all right. So you're just looking for improvement this course?
Yeah, and the administration, nobody wants to tell us, and for the, the test, for me, that's all objective. The administration tells me it worked, like, what they trust it worked, looking at that. But again, that's all within the contract.
Okay.
I'm sure there's good indicators even before they're tested.
Absolutely.
But based on, you know, how social skills and some other things. So you'll, you'll, I don't think it'll be a surprise when they're tested in third grade, whether, whether it's a success or not, it should be pretty evident even before that.
And speaking of social skills, hopefully, I mean, our, our staff would notice that right away. I mean, we're beginning to see if half the students, maybe this behavior, and they're spending more time with that student, and you might get some significant results too.
Thank you.
Next question. So the fir-, first group goes through, they don't get their, you know, statistical results till after four years, but we continue to run the program? So there's, so that whole four years, we're...
It's not just a one-year...
It's not a one-year test, and so we're going to keep going? Because I imagine that, yeah, the teachers are going to get into a rhythm and probably approve the program as they go. Okay, great, thanks.
I did have a question on the I, what was changed in the calendar?
Um, just the six, seven, eight, the dates were listed wrong at the bottom.
Oh, it's typed on?
It's like a, it's the updated version.
What was it again, what was it typed on?
The bottom dates in the right corner said six, seven, and eight. Then the one says seven, eight, and nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Under June, it said six, seven, and eight, but it should be seven, eight, and nine, which is what is revised.
The corrected version's in the book back there.
That's the only, that's the only change, and it's, the correction version is in the back.
Actually, I have a question on the calendar too, now that you're not remembering. So we're having a in-service day on June 12, for the ninth and fifteenth?
I'm thinking, they're, they're in the cars already, at the beach, because...
Standby for that seat.
Can I ask then why?
That's where we have to place it. I mean, we were running out of...
I don't, I don't see, you don't think we should add in to the sand, at this point? I don't know.
Well, this, that prize heard.
The purpose of the in-service day is to do what it's currently...
It's always, yeah.
If I could interject on that, I can tell you some of the reasons behind that. Some of the reasons behind that in-service is, part of that day is so that there's final exams and things like that at the high school and community grade. There's also a checkout procedure they need to do, they have graduation the night before, so that we also need to flesh that time within the teacher's contract. So there's a whole variety of reasons why that's, I know it looks awkward when you look at it, but that is why it's there.
It's always been.
Okay. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Policy? This way.
Yes. Okay, the policy we met today prior to this meeting at 6 o'clock, December 20, where we had robust discussion on policy 105.2, exemption from instruction. Committee was discussing whether or not students should be allowed to exempt themselves from instruction that made them uncomfortable. We were assured by the administration that that process really did already exist, that a student can be dismissed, go down to the guidance council, or, you know, a teacher would consider it, knowing the child, then whether it was a sincere request or not. We didn't really, we decided that we didn't really want to codify the student exemption.
Specifically, a religious exemption?
A religious exemption.
Not just being way uncomfortable?
Which is what the policy is, so we moved to adopt that. Policy 229, continuing discussion on student fundraising. Again, the committee is being very diligent in its changing of the current policy, which is basically not, not a void, but we don't want to conflict with anything that Mr. Harris is starting in the district, and we're just talking about restricting, restrictions on purchases, perhaps by boosters, perhaps equipment, equipment repairs, and uniforms. We'd like eventually to see the board take ownership of that again, and, you know, the uniform replacement schedule, and, you know, add some sanity back to that, those purchases that Mr. Harris is in the process of obtaining that information, so we can further discussion. Again, it's just continuing discussion on 229. We are continuing discussion on resource material, policy 109, as far as the ambiguity of the word "full board" in the policy. And we will be fleshing that out, getting that to the full board when we clarify that. Policy 110, instructional materials, we are moving to the first reading with minor changes in the language. Policy 011 is, we had an interesting discussion on, that's a new initiative from PASB. 100 school districts already have taken this pledge for ethics, of board ethics, called the Principles for Governance and Leadership. So in our discussion, it could actually be codified in your policies as policy 011, and it's just statements of ethics on how we lead and how we conduct our business, conduct ourselves. The, the committee is recommending that it go to the full board as more as a mission statement than anything they really want to see codified. So I will be circulating the seven principles that are tied to that initiative, and we will have a, a, for the students, they'll put it on the, in a whole, full discussion and vote, and possible adoption. And that's it for policy, any questions?
I did have a question. Did you cover the 006.1 teleconferencing tonight? Did you discuss that?
No.
Because Mr., you know, Mr. Martino had asked that, to, to look at that at our last, last meeting.
I don't recall that, I thought we lived there, or what was it concerned with?
I, if I understand the concern, he felt the restrictions on the amount of, number of times you could participate through teleconferencing was limited, and it should be, the ability to participate more via teleconferencing would be preferable.
I thought the old committee did discuss that decidedly, but as it was.
Yes, we, we did, but again, that was the previous board. And it was pushed, this policy was pushed forward, so we didn't adopt it at that time. So it's actually second reading, so at the end of the month, it will become the new policy, unless it's, you know, it's revised.
Okay, so we, the process there would be pulled from the second reading and sent it back to committee? And what's the process for that? Does the full board have to look at that, or is one person?
Well, anybody can take motion to table it.
Okay.
And then we can vote on that motion. Table it and take, and send it back to, back to the committee for, for discussion, and, or changes, or...
Okay.
If, if the changes are not, no changes are supportive, that it continues on, you know, on the path.
That process concerns me, that we could, you know, put all this work in committee, send the process, send the new policy through, and then, you know, the last 48 hours, we have to pull it off and send it back to the committee. It's just, it's random to me, if that's the process, that's what we do. But it does concern me that there hasn't been prior discussion on it. Or, you know, when it came out of committee, why wasn't it?
There actually was prior discussion, in fact, listed under Old Businesses, teleconferencing policy 006.1, and as far as the committee doing all the work, the board can then, when it goes to the full board, the full board can vote it down anyway and send it back to committee, so.
My question is, why wasn't it stopped when it came up from committee? The first time it was reported from committee, why didn't someone say, "No, we don't want it"? Because it was decided to just be reviewed and not changed, as I recall.
That's a discussion of ours.
And we directed Mr. Harris to make sure that it would be, he would be the one in charge of tracking those numbers and calling it. So...
So we, we want to enjoy time before it gets adopted, policy rights, we need to, we need to get together and... to, we need to get together and, and another, or dinner next-
It could, it could still be adopted as is, because you have a majority of approval on it, and then still the committee can go back later and change it again.
And are we good to say that, or that'll be the, you know, the priority for our next committee meeting?
You could take, if, if, if there was a vote to table, then you would disable the second reading, you could talk about the next meeting, and then adopt it after that, right? Or you could adopt it and then talk about it again, and then it would have to go to the first or the second.
No, you can change it between first and second reading, but my understanding would then, should change it after the second reading to adoption at the end of the month.
It's not even on the agenda tonight.
That's, uh-
Is it?
Uh, second reading's under it.
Well, I'll handle it every week, the board wants to handle it.
I'm sorry. The, the, so, was it, um, was it reviewed by the old policy committee at the end of 2015, or the end of, okay?
It was, and then we decided-
And by our policy committee, you decided they were okay with it the way it was?
Right, we voted to keep it as is, and then that policy, it was, it was too late to get it on the agenda for December, so then it carried over, and then Mr. Martino had asked to revisit it while it was on-
Once you have a second reading, that's the one that we talk about, right?
I'm sorry?
Oh, Gary might come up.
Oh gee, you're giving me some power now. No, um, this has been, I've, I've been, and I've been confused by this too, because it seems like we've done different things. It seems like our advice from our solicitor has been varying. I, I think how it works is first, there's first reading, which is listed, and second reading, which is listed, but then there comes final approval at the next meeting, which is a part of the yes or no vote. It shouldn't be this automatic transition of, if there's no objection, and nobody talks about it automatically, there's policy first reading, nobody can talk about it in second reading, you can talk about it third meeting, a, 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 a best hire student.
My, my understanding, talking to this assume is, is you can change the policy even substantially between the first and second reading, but after tonight, that it's on this, it should-
That's like the final amortized version, kind of.
Yes, that, that's how it's explained.
Well, just a, so, a question, because I know part of the discussion on that whole teleconferencing policy was the meeting versus the special voting meeting versus the voting meeting, or, so, like, tonight, we're having voting meetings. So that counts as a voting meeting, or only regularly scheduled meetings?
Only the regularly, regularly scheduled voting meetings, once a month.
Because I, I don't, I don't know that, I'm trying to, when I read the policy, it defines meeting, it doesn't just define voting meeting. So my personal opinion would be if you're gonna reference voting meeting as a specific topic that takes place, or that's a requirement, then I would define voting meeting. Because otherwise, I think tonight would count, I think any meeting that we could vote against. So I, I, that would just be my recommendation, because I think it's too ambivalent, otherwise, unless you're attorney, totally different.
Miss White, my understanding that it did say voting meeting, but am I correct? I don't have it?
I thought we cleared it up by putting it, capitalizing it, meaning that a voting meeting will be, as it is the official designation of the once a week, meet, once a month meetings, school board meetings, and for me, believe it or not, other districts do call them other names, but that is the official terminology in this district. So I thought we thought the ambiguity was cleared up, but the fact that it said, uh, voting meeting-
This is capitalized, though.
Right. It's a special voting meeting, right?
My understanding is-
I'm fine with it. We wanted to, uh, have a motion to table it, bring it back to committee, and, and put some definitions in there.
There's, there's 11 voting meetings in a year.
That's just the fact.
I, 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 I know, we've thrown a lot of time on the policy, but does-
Well, it was a sense of, to be, to be, so it was a sense of conversation to have, because it really was written in the beginning to address Mr. Kurtz.
Well, I can leave Mr. Sirin, so.
Well, well, yes, that's true, but, um, right at, when the, when the board was considering this, it was only Mr. Kurtz that was taking advantage of that on a regular basis.
Semi-regular.
Well, Mr. Basil was taking vacation, you know, and called in.
Well, just, you know, when I'm on vacation at the next voting meeting, I'm not calling in.
Doesn't mean you can't call you.
That's, feel free, I will feel.
How do we want to hold this, then? Do we want to see if there's a motion to table and see her?
Well, I don't think the, the balance of the board members, um, I don't think they understand what the difference is between, you know, what the, the policy currently is and what Mr. Martino would, has asked to, to the policy review committee to consider. So I don't have it in front of me to, to discuss it.
Well, I don't even know that he's asked for anything specific, right? Other than he wants to win.
I won't put words in Mr. Martino's mouth.
While we're here, we're discussing it, we might as well discuss it, right? Because-
I'm discussing it.
What I, what I said was, and, and this is coming from someone who has never missed a meeting, and has no intentions to miss more meetings, and if I were on vacation, I wouldn't call in either. But in, in this day and age of telecommunications, I don't know why somebody has to be actually sitting here to cast a vote. I mean, what if someone made 11 committee of the whole meetings and only four voting meetings? Should they be disqualified now because we have a speci- specificity of voting meetings? It just seems to me, I don't know why we have a limited number. And again, we have a couple new board members, I don't know if they understand that, um, actually, if I read the policy correctly, that there's not even a completion of, of if you don't meet that minimum requirement, what happens? I don't think there's any penalty in there.
I don't think you're five, five of all, you can't participate in, in a voting meeting once you've, uh, you know, I don't want to speak to-
You can't participate over the phone.
Right, you just can't participate over the phone, so, or you can't participate in that meeting via teleconference, so you just want to be able to-
You won't be able to vote that meeting.
Correct.
But it's the number of meetings in a calendar year, the last time I read the policy. So you wouldn't even know if you've missed more than half until the latter part of the year. I, I, I don't see the need for, for, for the policy myself, and it's just my thought. And again, I haven't missed a meeting, but I, I don't see the purpose of it.
And actually, I would take the opposite of the idea, it would be more stringent. So, uh, and I totally agree with, you know, Mr. Martino, that technology today is, you know, in, in a good place, and that we should be able to call in, but, you know, typically it's, uh, you know, for vacation, I don't think I would call in either, but, you know, if you're sick, uh, there's, there's a, a conflict in your schedule, uh, but usually it's for items that are not, uh, that are extraordinary or emergency. And my, my sole issue really is, um, and I think this kind of has been it before as well, you know, we, we are all off here, you cannot pay for this job, it's a, it's a, takes a lot of time, so we shouldn't be allowed to, to call in when needed. But by the same token, when you're at the office, and we, we're going to have a vote, the folks have a right to see you here, um, making that vote. And, and that's when you get the folks that, whether they're, they're taxpayers, or upset that taxes are going up, whether they're closing a school, whether we're cutting programs, that's when the folks come out. And we, you have the table here saying, we want people to come to meetings, we want them to come out, if they don't show up, but then when they do for a big, big item, and we're not there to go for it, or on the phone. How, how can you justify that? That's where my, my issue is.
I share the same sentiment.
As Mr. Radke, I think we're republic officials, and we should function in the public, I think we should be serving the public. We should be accountable to the republic, to the press afterwards, for our, for our actions.
Yeah, I had to say, I agree with that, I mean, I, I ran as to be public servant, to be here, and, you know, if somebody has an, an issue that they want to bring, that you can see, you see that person, they can see you, you hear how you're, you're voting, you can actually hear, I mean, being on the phone's a lot different than, than being here, because, uh, you can actually hear much better, uh, you know, certainly, you know, can't speak to it very often, I only did it once, uh, I think Mr. Kurtz found it difficult at times to, to hear what some of the comments were saying before we got the microphones, but my feeling is, you know, you, you ran for election to be here, and, I mean, we're all, a lot of us are in business, um, and our business takes us away, and we have to, you know, travel, and so that, that option should be available, but we certainly don't want it to become a remote, in my words, a remote representative. I, I was not in favor of changing it beyond what it was. So I think right now we have at least, at least four of us that feel that way.
Well, I, and I don't have a problem with the policy the way it was. I was, I mean, I would vote for it the way it is. I mean, I, I agree, and I called in, I think, once, uh, Skyped, and actually, back when we used to Skype, on, because it was a budget meeting, and it was June, it was last meeting in June, and every vote counts. I mean, so, so, uh, back when there were five, four votes.
Yeah, and I re- I remember that one of those, I had, I was driving in my car from taking, uh, from Westchester, driving in my car, pulling over in McDonald's parking lot to give my committee presentation, and I'm driving at 4:22, voting, so.
On that note, I remember you actually just heard something, you had to go back and read it again. Yeah.
So, but I agree, and should, I don't, I mean, if you get to a point where you're, you're voting in every meeting.
May I read the, the, just that one sentence and question for the public?
Please do. Thank you.
Participation in meetings via communication device may not exceed a majority of all regularly scheduled voting meetings in a calendar year for any board meeting member. And I stand corrected, we didn't capitalize a voting meeting, I think we, the discussion was just that-
It's a regular-
Good year, break of the weekend.
Scheduled voting meeting was self-described.
Well, can end this very quickly, is there one more person that is in favor of keeping the policy as is?
Let's keep it and never talk about it again. We've talked about this stuff for years.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna leave this on, you tend to as is, and someday in the future, when I'm not here, you guys are free to talk about it. We won't have to bring it up anymore. Is there any other questions for Mrs. White on policy?
One thing, the, the resources discussion, we also talked about the use of electronic and, um, electronic media as a resource for teaching, and we're, uh, it's all thorough on that.
Right, thank you.
Well, working, motion to table. All right, is there any public comment, uh, comment on any of the policy other than 006.1? Thankfully seeing none. Transportation? Oh, yeah, you got that right. All right, um, the old business, the action list, um, do you have any updates on the action items? All right.
I'm not that, I'm not that interested. Why isn't the update right?
Yes, I, if you want to help, can you, as quickly as possible regarding?
It's a B of first.
That's a heavy group.
It's getting late, sorry.
Do enrollment, real quickly, on that note, um, at this point, we practically approved and moved forward with the 28 credits, though. Do enrollment credits in account on. Secondly, the laser summer piece, I want to give, uh, a lot, tremendous amount of credit to Mrs. Treehouse, who's here tonight, um, you know, as we have been a little shorthanded with people to develop the program, she's stepped in, and I think, again, it's, it emphasizes kind of this cross-departmental collaboration that is happening, not only between DBA, um, the tech department, the board, a lot of different groups to, to put this project together. So what you're seeing in front of you is, um, around 50 programs that, as Mrs. Treehouse went to building to building, and faculty meeting to faculty meeting, presented ideas and engaged her colleagues and our colleagues, you'll see us send, uh, all these different programs academically, um, there are, I believe, 23 programs right now, and athletically and activity-based, there are around 27 or 28, um, and we still have four or five programs at this time. And to keep it very simple, as we work, and I know Mr. Harris continues to work with DBA, uh, the activities and athletics are on the intramural rate, um, through the contract, and the academic program is on the curricular rate, that's, that's a generalization, but that pretty much almost true. You'll be able to get the Excel action out in that minute paper form, or if you want electronically, and it was developed, so you can kind of plug and play in different numbers, and you'll see, um, at each piece, what the facilitator cost is, date they're running, um, the hours that the program runs, um, how many, what's the minimum enrollment we would need in order for it to, the particular activity to happen? If we don't meet the minimum enrollment, the, uh, staff members have been, it's been explained that then the program doesn't run. We had a meeting today with Mr. Harris, Mr. Treehouse, Mr. Schmidt, uh, Mr. Matts, I'm not, somebody else was in the meeting, that's it.
That's it.
That, you kind of look at putting the interface together with the business department to have a paid house, so a person, uh, can just go online, register, it was in the cart, their students show up at those, uh, children show up at those dates, and a teacher is going to either teach its academic or have an activity, an intramural coach, and you can see all the players that are there, so to speak, um, in the program. So it's essentially ready to launch at this point, um, and we talked a little bit about the, kind of, PR campaign, and some, um, kind of, models to incentivize, uh, not only in district students, but out of district students to participate, so we're at that point, uh, it's ready to go.
What is flickerball?
Flickerball's a version of dating football, and you can throw it front and back, and kind of rugby-ish, uh, without the hard tackling, so it's, the one thing we talked to all the coaches about to grow, uh, interest is that they offer something. You guys okay?
We're fine.
So then they offer something. I, I can only imagine what Mr. Harris said to you, Mr. White.
Yeah, we, we told it the same thing when we were that age.
Yes.
I have a quick question from the public, if you guys were known. The, I, I assume you, I assume you would be really great at the personal work, because it's offered, because I know there are a lot of students who are interested in that, but I didn't see any off here, so I don't know if there's-
I think if you look on, there, there is an academic program. Okay, so there's been a few added since, uh, that time, there are a couple of, uh, tops.
The paper, the paper that you have is only the athletic activity programs, there was a second page in the Excel spreadsheet that they did print for you, that has all the academic programs, and then the art programs are there.
I can send, if you guys, if you can send the Excel, and you guys, you know, mess around, we'll make it sensitive. You see both, both tabs at the bottom, one will show activities and athletics, and still other programs.
Thank you so much for your leadership on this, Mrs. White. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Radke, my understanding is, is this is a revenue generation activity?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My understanding is this, this laser summer was a revenue generator?
Yes.
Are, are you able to quantify a, a projected amount of revenue you think we generate?
Well, I can tell you what our base cost will be, um, a break-even number, so to speak, uh, will be, if, if we have all the students in the minimum enrollment happy, it'll be about $20,000, $3,000. In the past, this program was a little more flush with, with programming opportunity, um, and in a previous experience, we were around, the first year around $50,000, so it could be around $25,000, but it's going to be a credit given how many, how many people enroll, and our risk exposure is minimized, because it's been explained that if we don't do have it, the, the minimum, it's not running, so it, it won't cost us on that side of it, so. I'd be optimistic and hoping year one, we can get to that $20,000, $25,000 number, and then in years two and three, we, you know, we should be in the $65,000, $75,000 range if it flushes the right way.
Thank you. If the idea is to get, make people aware of it, it exists, and have the word spread to other students as they come through, I think that would be, uh, the way most people are going to learn it?
I think, you know, the conversation we spoke about today is that, what if it doesn't have a, a, what if it's kind of at a zero game this year? We, we still think it's worth running in year one to grow the model, wanting years two, three, and four down the road, um, but certainly not operating in any kind of loss or something.
Have to plant the seed sometime.
I have a quick question on the revenue question, is the revenue, so revenue traditionally is total amount in, not taking into, not taking into account total amount going out, what would be the profit?
Yeah, so then, actually, I want to phrase it in, yeah, drill business terms, yeah, we're talking about the profit, if it goes well, around $25,000. Our cost is going to be around $19,000 to $24,000, just to operate these programs if it goes at the minimum level.
So profit you're estimating is anywhere from $0 to $25,000.
Correct.
I have a quick.
Sorry.
May I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Ask another question on that?
We first want to know, is that just for Boone residents, or if it really catches on?
It's a great question. Again, we discussed this, so how do we draw folks from the outside in? So it's not just for Boone residents. And Mr. Harris had some ideas about how, basically, have students partner with friends or maybe outside the district, and some discounting and, you know, costing out there.
So we can, there's no insurance restrictions that would prohibit?
Well, that's, that's, we talked about that. That's the value running under our realm, that, you know, when you do outside providers, they have to bring up insurance. We're saying, we're the key provider, so it's under our insurance model.
Great.
We're looking at it also as a way of recruiting students to the district also. There are a lot of programs for younger students, so if we can show them, hey, this is what Boone offers you, why not move to our district and come here? It's, we're using as recruitment tool.
One other question. Is Mrs. Treehouse's enthusiasm indicative of the staff across the board?
Yes. I think it is.
Is that a good? Thank you. And thank you, Mr. McKnight. This is your lady, and I really appreciate your leadership too.
Yes, thank you again for all your hard work that you put into.
It's not done yet. It's not done yet.
They've got to start somewhere.
I'm so happy about it.
Anytime you give the opportunity for Mr. McKnight to grab the microphone, he'd be right on.
Actually, that was interesting.
We did talk about the vocational technical authority member, member of the public that's coming forward tonight. PowerPoint showing pie chart of district expenses, that'd be something we're going to see at the budget presentation?
Yes, that's always a part of the budget presentation, but also, the data audit report from miscellaneous data, specifically on page 11 this past year, is posted on the district website. We will find a pie chart of general district expenses. We will be developing more specific, breaking down by salary or other areas in the budget presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Small. The last item here, we're gonna scratch, and I can talk about it. All right. Is there any public comment? Seen none. New business on this grant discussion, Mrs. McCaskey?
Do you want me to come up there?
Whenever you feel comfortable.
I don't have a PowerPoint, so I can't do that. Well, I was asked, I'm sure there were probably questions that prompted my meeting to put on the agenda with the wellness grant, but I'll provide some historical background about the grant, and then share some of the activities that were part of the grant this year, things that are projected for next year, and then if there were questions, or specifically things I missed, we can, we can ask. So the grant, Daniel Boone received grant money through the Pocetown Health and Wellness Foundation for the first time in the 12, 13 school year, and at that time, we received a little over $36,000. We continue to receive grant money through the foundation each year. The following year, 13, 14, it was $66,000, $68,000. Last year, $70,000, this year, and we've asked for $109,000 next year. As pie, we'll see what we get. As far as this current year, the budget breaks down to about $44,000 for personnel, $7,000 for operating costs, $11,000 with budgeted for transportation, and $6,000 for indirect Activities throughout the district this year, there's a, there's a bigger, the biggest loser contest that's for, that's for staff. The grant funds, the Relay for Life 1K, it provides the snacks and the t-shirts for that. It provides some, some funding for buddy bonds and special Olympics, for the special education fees. At the high school this year, press and rod in, winning factor, so that's been up and running, and that's funded through the wellness grant, as well as staffing in the weight room. I think four days a week is also provided through the wellness grant. The drug and alcohol, the Karen Foundation, the person who comes into the high school is funded through the grant. We had money budgeted for the Burke's Team Pregnancy Program, but at that time, we don't need that right now, so we're not using those funds. Also for the blood drive, grant money is used to provide the breakfast. At the middle school, there's a changes program that runs at least two sessions. There was going to be a baby sitting class offered, but there was not, we didn't have students who were interested in that. There's after-school sports at AEC, also fitness for kids, girls on the run, and the summer sports club at BSC, there's after-school sports. In the past, there was a nutrition program that Tammy Hughes, the nurse, ran along with Dee Steny. Dee's looking to see if there's another staff member who would be willing to continue that for this year. The backpack for kids program has, is funded through the wellness, as well as the summer sports program. At MEC, they participated in the backpack for kids program. They're looking, there's two teachers interested in looking and providing some type of fitness program. The issue with monocracy is, transportation is provided through the wellness grant, however, it's a, it's not, they drop the students off, so it's not like they, the parents are there. So there's that issue with dropping paper when a student is often not having their parents there. So transportation is a concern with having after-school program there. In addition to that, Andrea Stumhoffer, she's the phys ed teacher at the elementary center. She is the person who maintains and sort of runs the grant. She completes the grant application, she completes the intent. Before it's submitted, I do read over it and I do approve it. However, she is authoring that, and has always, once Anne Marie left, Anne Marie kind of turned that over to her, I think, the year before she left. She attends the foundation meetings. If I'm able to, I do that as well, but I do this on my own time. I do not take a statement from the grant for the hours and the time that I put into the grant. As far as next year, we're looking to expand the after-school sports program, and the timeline for that is, we put in the letter of intent at the end of February, we'll know whether they're approving the funds that we're asking for, and if we can move ahead with the application, or they'll come back and say, we need to cut it back, that they'll only give us, you know, so much, they're not going to give us $109,000, but they'll tell us the forever that we're working in. So we're looking, continuing the changes program, summer sports club. There's also a wellness committee that meets, and we do meet now, and there is, I think, that's provided for those in attendance there. Additional equipment and materials that are needed at the buildings, looking maybe at a health fair district-wide, a crisis response team, which would be new, having teams in each building that are CPR certified, also looking at crisis equipment, walkie-talkies, making sure that there's, whatever is needed for that crisis team is provided in each of the buildings. Continuing with the weight room facilitator and the winning factor at the high school, we also have a great opportunity to have Dr. Ginsberg come, and that will be funded completely through the grant, and he will speak on resilience. His cost to present is $10,000. Again, that will be through the grant, and that is something they encourage because part of the grant is learning about resilience. So we'll have the opportunity to have him in our district for a full day. And I'm working with Mr. Hurley and Mr. Harris on that day, and what that day will look like, and who will be invited to participate, and how we can reach as many people as possible because it's an awesome opportunity to have him in the district. Looking to expand the staff training, to have two, two full days. And again, the bus transportation. In addition to the after-school programs, the wellness grant also funds the Dr. Sue stay, transportation from the elementary buildings to the high school. So, questions?
Mrs. McCaskey, this actually came up. We were in Mr. Small's office, Mr. Small, myself, and Mr. Hurley, preparing for the finance committee meeting, and some questions came up, and I think you answered some of them. The teacher you mentioned, Stumhoffer?
Right.
Stumhoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley said he only dealt with you, he didn't even know what her role was, and that was one of the questions we had.
Well, that is, her role is to, as I said, put the information in the grant through the letter of intent, and her, the stipend that she receives is not, she doesn't just get a flat stipend. She has to submit for the hours that she works. She submits a time card and I sign in. So she has to account for five, and she doesn't ever reach the maximum that's listed on the grant.
But then we saw a lot of other timesheets for individuals, and it looked like so much per hour. Who were all these individuals?
What are they run, they're running the after-school programs, they're running the changes programs. Who are they? They're all employees of the district. If they're teachers, they're paid at a $25 an hour rate. If they're instructional assistants or secretaries, they're paid at whatever their hourly rate is.
Okay. And perhaps I'm confusing the grants, but Mr. Kurtz and I made his annual Christmas visit to the high school in December, and we understood that there was exercise equipment being purchased for the high school, and we asked Mr. McKnight, and he said he had no idea what we were talking about to ask you. Was that out of the wellness grant?
I think that, that is out of the wellness grant, however, not through us. That is the grant that was, that was on the agenda plenty, for $32,000.
They also got the wellness.
Booster grant.
There's, that was the booster grant, they voted against the Pocetown office, can we do that? The thing that you asked me about was the treadmill, and I have no idea about the treadmill. I understand you have a treadmill in any place.
I didn't get to that yet. There's a treadmill on the third floor up here.
Right.
Where did that come from? Who's it for?
That, that's for the employees who work in the buildings. The wellness grant is not just for the students, it's a district-wide for the adults who work in the district as well, to promote that, and there were, we needed, we had extra money. And you can't turn grant money back in. So we had the opportunity to buy equipment last year, and it was, there was, that treadmill was bought.
I only ask you, it's a very nice treadmill. And do all the employees who work in this building, are they aware that they have access to it?
I sure hope so.
And, and do they use it?
I don't know, I'm not in this building.
Wanted to know, it's important, can he use it?
Yes, he can.
No, I have, I have my own that is exceedingly underused, but that excises the point.
I do.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we have, we have this beautiful treadmill upstairs, and if the employees are working and they only get a limited amount of time for lunch, I guess the question is, how much use is that getting? And like most treadmills, it would show, especially that one that's all electronic, would probably show the hours on it. I just, I just think somebody ought to look to see that it's getting utilized, otherwise it's in the wrong location.
That's true. If it's not being utilized, we should put it somewhere else, building.
Some people use it after work, too.
Do we know when the treadmill's been replaced at the high school, the weight room students use?
Like, I don't know. No, I don't know. From the last time I ever replaced. And then we replaced something last, last year in June, when we.
Yeah, at the end of the year last year, Mrs. McCaskey contacted me, said there's X amount of dollars, and we talked with Mr. Arsl to see, and I think he got actually, not treadmill, but a stair climb, which is in the training room area there, where we have our students now.
Maybe just staying with our student for his mind, so we can put the new treadmill as a, as a student's to use, and we can take one of those treadmills right here, and I think that, that assumption should be over to the students.
I have a question, please. Mrs. McCaskey, can we get a written copy of your report? Because that was just overwhelming for my net taking abilities.
What did you want?
What, where the money has been spent?
For the grant. Sure, because we do a roundup at the end of the year, too, so we can give you that sort of, at the end of the year.
And that's my question, then, is there some formalized procedure for us to get, routinely get reports on grants and the spending, the good that came out of it? And second, it sounds like some of those things should be held through the curriculum committee if they have instructional purposes, like the SUSO program or the, I forget what else she mentioned. It's essential we have to get the instructional portion, portion of these grants. All instructional programs in the district are supposed to be approved by the board. So those pieces have to be put off, and sent over to the committee, obviously, but we should also be getting, getting full, robust reports like that, that's what we, on a regular basis.
I think all grants are tracked, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because the money has to go for what it's.
How?
All, all grants are tracked in that similar manner because the money is cost back. Now, I would think that the curriculum part would have to come first because that's put into the grant, and it's assumed, once the grant's received, that's what the money's going to be used for. So what you're asking for, for approval would have to come before the grant, because once the grant comes in, that's what it has to be used for, it can't be changed.
I wouldn't want to complicate the grant application process, because I know how cumbersome that is, and I really appreciate Mrs. Stumhoffer's work on this, and yours, Mrs. McCaskey. I would suggest that we, that it comes to the board for approval after the grant has been requested, so that it can just be pulled if it had to. I'm going to assume that they're using good judgment, know that it's going to be approved program, but yet still give the board the right of, you know, last refusal if it is something that really should not take place in the district.
Okay.
What does the board think of that? Is that a good protocol?
Well, I think you're on the right track, Mrs. White. I, I'm not, maybe it's just me, but I'm not comprehending, hearing that we have to identify what the grant money goes toward at the outset before applying for the grant, and then hearing that we had leftover money that we used to buy the treadmill. Those two things are connecting in my mind. So for me, I've been frustrated as a board member, and even serving as a treadmill a few years ago, not knowing, like, we apply for these grants, we receive these grants, but then how the money is spent, I mean, it doesn't seem like board ever really has, I don't even say a role, but we aren't even aware of what's, other than applying for the grant and receiving the grant, we don't know where the money goes. I'm interested in knowing that, no matter what stage in the process, how we're going to find the treadmill, I want to ask why. So I'd like more information when it comes to all of these grants, as to how the money is expended.
Any other thoughts?
Does that mean we need to look at all the grants we're applying for? Because the grants themselves, they, don't they govern the spending?
Right.
That's what Mrs. McCaskey just said. Everything's defined in what, in advance, and what it's going to be used for, and it has to be used for that purpose.
So my mind is we're willing to not approve the application of the grant, or assuming that the money's being spent appropriately.
But the board still needs notification. I'm saying almost like some of these other routine approvals, we should get it before and once we get it, immediately, as soon as a grant is approved, we should just put it in, almost like this, as a finality. But there's four years of reports here, but I never heard, I never knew that money went. I remember requesting information from Mrs. Torch, when I was in the board, and she actually sent me the grant request, pages and pages and pages of the grant request, the wellness grant, but I never found out when we received the grant, how much we received the grant, what the grant was used for. I think that thinking in the district has always been, if it doesn't hit the general fund, it doesn't have to go through the board, and that's the thinking that we need to change. And this is a step, if you, that what I'm suggesting, that the board just gets involved automatically as soon as the grant's approved, and what it was approved for. Sounds like there's even room for editing of a grant, even after they approve the process, as Mrs. McCaskey just illustrated. So there is some room there for the board to, you know, flag if it absolutely has to.
As long as we're not going to interfere with the process of submitting, missing a deadline.
I agree. I totally agree.
And I don't see why we can't, why we couldn't put it on, maybe the whole, as a, you know, this is what we're applying for, just so a board member.
And we should see the details of what we were approved to get.
Right, a board member would like to see the details. A board member would like to see the details of what's being submitted, they certainly have access to that information, but the trigger for knowing that it exists would go on the agenda as a, just a formality.
So the information, right, getting the weeds on the wellness.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just for, we should be just oversight, I don't want to get into weeds of.
I don't want to get into the management.
And that's just my opinion, I don't think, I don't think we want to dissect, I think, second guess everything that's in there, just be aware of it exists and it's being applied for. Is that fair? Are we going to interfere with the process in any way that?
No, I don't think so. And once the grant's received, it always goes on the board agenda.
We get the notification and we get the amount. We never get what the spending is earmarked for. I appreciate that.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we're not going to interfere in the process of all that.
It's kind of like the textbook approval process. No board member really is going to stop the approval process, but we have oversight, and we do, don't find, we actually, some of us look for them kind of intensely, but it's, it would be extremely rare to stop the process or interfere with the process. Thank you. Thank you, boards, for considering that.
I want to say something just quickly because I think it matters historically and now as, I guess, one of the older members, one of the longest-serving members continuously, I remember back when I first joined the board for a few months.
That's tight old, that was.
I know.
Your service.
Yeah. Let's get it. I mean, Mrs. McCaskey was on for in two years, like we don't have much institutional memory, which is why I'm sharing this. We had some administration back, back a few years ago, and when it came to spending money from grants, it was always kind of, it was a very mysterious process. We'd say, how are we going to fund this? And we actually would get it, oh, I have a grant for that. And it was, hey, great. But that was always, I think the administrator, I'm getting more specifically, said that she had a drawer full of grants, she could go to, yes. And I think that this is really something the board should be looking more involved in, if nothing else, just, like Mrs. White said, but just be aware of the reason, at least I'm interested in this information isn't to be overbearing or to create more work for our administrators, because in the past they've had issues with the grants, or at least we might have been wondering where money's coming from, where it's going. So that's why I'm interested in, I'm looking at, maybe just a board looking at background, that otherwise they've been lost.
I was just going to say too, I mean, I certainly don't necessarily need to read all 200 pages of a grant application, or I don't know what sense some of these grants are, but I know sometimes. But from my, my own experience applying for grants, and I don't know if there's usually one page somewhere, summary of the budget, so even if we could just maybe get, if the summary of the budget is out, at least we should submit it, then we kind of at least know what to be planning for that money. So, thank you.
Just a follow-up, what Mr. Kurtz was saying, for Mr. Scott's edification, there have been issues in the past with how the grant money was spent, and even what Ms. McCaskey just said, that they had this wellness grant, the board approved it, but they come up with extra money, so they decided to buy a couple treadmills. In my mind, the extra money should have come to the board to determine, was it okay to buy the extra treadmills? Because that was not part of the original grant. Last June, there was a question about textbook purchases. Now, this is June, this is the end of the school year, and what we heard from an administrator was, oh, well, we have extra grant money we could use for these books. Well, that grant money should have been spent throughout the year, but it wasn't, and now we're going to use it for textbooks, but it was not the original intent. So there is a reason that we need to track this better.
So then, I completely agree, so then, you know, is that not something that you create policy around? In other words, well, it's simply just getting information, someone says, here's our, here's our grant statement, you know, what are they supposed to do when there's, when there's extra grant money?
I'll look into that.
I'm saying, I mean, and I'm not talking about strange, you know, spend a year, spend a year, spend a year, but there should be some type of, even if it's, hey, it all goes to the administrative, there's some type of pool for administrative, or there's a, there's a process by which, you know, Mr. Harris oversees, that the money gets kind of appropriately. Are there other stipulations within the grant itself that say, if you don't use all the money for a purpose stated, what are you supposed to do with it? Because I would imagine they'd want to be aware of that too.
I'll look into that with the pass, but. And explore that a little further with Mrs. McCaskey, if that's okay, and for my recommendation to either to the board or to the board through policy, okay?
Yeah. Thanks, Mrs. White.
Sure.
Any other discussion during, yeah, new business, other new business?
Yeah, other new business, it's something I just wanted to bring up, ready to say to the board members, and just get a little bit of clarification for myself. I did speak with Mr. Harris about this earlier, and I don't want to blind him, but I remember reading that there is in the high school this last week, involving, apparently a student was alleged to perhaps be dangerous, or present some type of danger in the high school, and that wasn't the case at all, and the students who alleged this were pretty much just joking, and the guys at the point were the state police were involved. And my concern is that I don't believe students who instigated the matter, who made the joke, made the comment that led to all of this, they haven't been disciplined other than having to speak with the state police, which I'm sure was a real experience in itself, but that is my concern, and I was disappointed here that it wasn't some type of disciplinary action taken, that even at the point of a letter being placed, students file or a note, if there is any incident that causes disruption to the school day, the point where the police are involved, if it involves one student making a claim about another student, even if it's just a joke, even if it's only a comment in passing, I think there needs to be some type of follow-up discipline, or discipline comes to discipline. That's just my thought, and I'm not saying, maybe just moving forward, something to think about. I know that I would, if I were a student in the death of my life, I would not be really comfortable in my way, things like that could be said, or in situations could be made that somebody was incorrect in the school when they weren't, and get away scot-free. That's just my thought and matter. I don't know if any other board members have commented, but I wanted to say, thank you.
So, there's a lot of misinformation in what you said, and I don't think it should be our practice to discuss student discipline publicly, but I'm likely discussing with you.
I want to interrupt you right there, because I did have a conversation, I want to make sure I'm doing this right, and the information I'm relying upon is the information that was provided by the administration, so if there's any misinformation, that's on the part of the administration. Secondly, I thought this might be a topic for extension session, but I wasn't about this to talk about it publicly, which is why I'm doing so. I wanted to make that point first.
There was no student spreading rumor or maliciously said anything, and so that was vetted, the conversations have happened without talking about student discipline publicly, telling you what was done quietly. If you want to give me a call, I can certainly show it to any board member, and I think that that would be our best piece, but students aren't getting all scot-free anyways.
Glad to hear that, but moving forward, if we can make sure that our communications are a little bit clearer, and articulate a little bit more of what actually happened, then I'd be very appreciative of the board member.
I personally cringe about the board intervening in these very, very personal student affairs and trust our administrators to handle them, and us as they seek, with all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Kurtz.
Well, thank you, Mrs. White. I don't mean, and Mr. McKnight as well, I don't want to talk about specifically this case or this student. At this point, I don't think that I'm talking about it publicly, would it be appropriate to go back and discipline anybody I'm talking about for student movement forward? And I hope that if my understanding of the situation was incorrect based on the information I've been provided, if that's the case, then I hope that if the situation that I did describe, if it's similar to what I'm thinking happened, if that were kind of in the future, that there would be some type of disciplinary action, because under this schema, I guess that I'm operating, that there would be more.
Any student maliciously put another student in a compromised position would be dealt with in an extremely, in a forthright manner. That's what we've done, I think, you know, in our short term, we have a tracker for doing that. Again, at that point, you know this is discipline, but I know you guys are aware of a number of things that have occurred throughout the year, and we take direct action, we don't tolerate any kind of intimidation or bullying or grooming laundering, or any of those types of pieces, those things are addressed directly, and once we got all the information, I hope correctly. Okay, thank you.
Let me just add something, and I grew up in an age where we sort of let the kids take care of themselves, and I mean, there was no such thing when I went to school as bullying, and we dealt with it with each other. But in line with what Mr. Kurtz is saying, and I don't know what happened or what took place, or what action was taken, but I think what Mr. Kurtz wants, I think, listening to what you're saying, is just an assurance that there is a zero tolerance policy for any kind of threat, and that the students understand it's not something that could even be joked about.
Be assured.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Seen none, is there any public comment? No. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, presentation's barred.
All right, we're going to move unless there's.